Before the Mayor opens the meeting this evening, I have a few housekeeping items for you to note. And you do have my permission now to begin filming, Mr Offer. The toilets are through the double doors where you entered and they're on the left. There's no fire drill planned. And the emergency exits are on my right and my left, and also through the main doors where you all came in. Please switch off all mobile phones. I'll go through the procedure to be followed if you wish to speak on items in the agenda during the public forum. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand and the Mayor will write down the names on your contact details. She will then invite your comments from the list of names. If you do not raise your hand at this time, you will not be permitted to speak. Please stand unless it's difficult for you to do so, and speak so that everyone can hear you. State your name for the minutes and then go ahead with your question or comment, addressing it to the Mayor. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in the public forum? Nobody else? Right, okay, I'll continue. Under the council's standing orders, members of the public may speak once for no more than three minutes, and the public forum will not exceed thirty minutes, standing order 1E. The town council is not required to enter into any debate in respect of any comment, standing order 1G. Brayding Town Council has a transparency policy which was adopted in October 2016, and if any member of the public has any concerns relating to the operation of the town council, the staff, or financial arrangements, please contact me to make an appointment to view the appropriate documents and discuss your concerns openly. We're coming into the season of goodwill, so may I ask you all to treat the councillors with the respect you would expect for yourself. Before the meeting begins, I'm obliged to warn the public and members of Brayding Town Council that a member of the public intends to film proceedings here tonight. He is perfectly entitled under the law to do this. We have arranged the public seating area to accommodate members of the public who do not wish to be filmed, and those people should be sitting in the block on my left. If you have signed the sheet when you arrived to indicate that you do not wish to be filmed and are not sitting in this area, please raise your hand and we will ensure you are moved into the correct area. The town council, under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, is required to provide facilities for the filmmaker, and a table and chair have been provided in the centre of the public seating area for this purpose. Facilities have also been provided for the press as normal. The person filming is not permitted under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014 to move outside of the area reserved for the public, and must use the facilities provided for him. There may not be excessive noise from the machinery, no intrusive lighting, and no requests for statements to be repeated are permitted. He is not permitted to impede other members of the public, councillors, or members of staff by operating the equipment in a manner which is intrusive to anyone. A running commentary for the purpose of the filmmaking is not permitted. As well as compliance with the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, the filmmaker must also have regard to the Data Protection Act and the Defamation Act 1996. Any breach of the above will be considered as disruptive to the meeting and exclusion will follow. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure Mr Offer could hear.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December meeting of Brayding Town Council. I'm delighted to see so many people here this evening. Can you hear me because I haven't turned my thing on? You can. I must shout then. That's very good. Can you hear me? Yeah?
Turn it on then, why not?
Right. I'm sure that everyone here wants this meeting to run as smoothly as possible, as much as we do. Okay, so we'll start with the public forum and the first name on our list. June.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask a question and I'd like to say something as well if I may. Can I ask first of all, why we've had to change the hall and is it going to cost us extra money to be here? Instead of being tomorrow night at the school, that is, why have we had to come here tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The change was because the school have a policy of no filming in the hall, and there was no other venue available tomorrow evening. So we've had to change the evening so that the proceedings can be filmed, as is the right of the member of the public. We do have to pay to hire this hall, and normally the school don't charge us, so it will be a minimum of thirty pounds to... the cost to the town council to film the proceedings this evening.
I think that's disgraceful that we have to pay to accommodate that. Really don't. Anyway, may I read something that I've written, please, Lady Mayor? First of all, I'd like to thank our Mayor, Deputy Mayor, the Town Councillors, and our club for all the hard work they are putting in to make it easier for us to get answers to our problems via the council surgeries, letters, emails, etc. And so get them researched before the meetings if possible, without us all asking things in the public participation before the meeting. I know it is not always possible for everyone to do this, but our councillors who give their spare time without pay for our community are trying to help us all. Following the November council meeting which ended before it even started, and which the council was right to stop in my view, I have given some thought to this rising situation. Our town council is trying hard to accommodate us all so that we may all go to these meetings, whatever our views, and we should work with them for a good outcome. We all have the same rights of law and to our views, and whilst the law says you can film council meetings, we the general public should have the right to say they do not want to be filmed, nor put on the social media sites, without their knowledge or permission to do so. And I'm pleased the council's made us a set for every tonight. Thank you. There are vulnerable people for whatever reason out in the public domain who should not be filmed in this way for their safety, as I had to explain to a Latt Sandown resident only last week and a Brayding couple this week. They don't think it should be filmed. I for one do not want to be filmed and posted on social media of any sort, and will not give my permission for that to be done. Whilst some of us are happy for it to be recorded by sound, as some other councils do, there are few residents who are not happy with being filmed. And if something permanent is not agreed, then we should not come to any more meetings, which is a shame as it is our right to do so. It is upsetting the community of Brayding. More upsetting is that people saying the council is wrong to stop the filming when they do not have the facts of what has been said or done. I couldn't even take a photo of my grandson in an activity place, so the school is right not to let film my hair there. We residents have our rights to hear the outcome of our problems with in Brayding at our town council meeting in an orderly fashion, and I sincerely hope that our meetings can get back to an orderly and productive evening with us all supporting our new councillors and giving them a chance to do this. Thank you, Lady Mayor.
Thank you, June. Next, please. Fanny, hello.
I would like to speak about the last item on the agenda, which is public participation. And the proposed resolution of that item is to resolve to hold public participation prior to town council meetings. I want to explain that, in my view, is a nonsense proposal because public participation is part of the town council meeting legally. The town council meeting has a legal structure. It begins with a summons. We all arrive at the date and the place. Then the Mayor opens the meeting. And then the whole of what happens after the Mayor has opened the meeting is part of the agenda of the meeting. And then it's closed, and that is the structure of the meeting. So the public participation is legally part of the meeting, has to be held within the agenda of the meeting. And I can give you a little... Well, it's simple bullet points that are provided by the National Association of Local Councillors to make this clear. So this comes from legal topic note five. Where a council permits the public to participate at a meeting, this session, one, is included as an item in the agenda; two, forms part of the council meeting in law; three, is managed by the chairman of the meeting; four, is documented in the minutes of the meeting; and five, an additional one, may permit a councillor to speak on a matter in which they have an interest which he or she is otherwise not permitted to speak about at the meeting. So that is the role of participation in law, and it has to be within the town council meeting. How it could be before the meeting is just nonsense.
Can I answer that?
Yes, please, councillor Huxley.
Thank you. As you might expect, I don't agree with you because there is no requirement to have public...
I mean, my public participation and we're not supposed to be having a discussion, are we?
Do you want an answer to that?
No, I don't. I'm not... I'm just... I'm saying my participation before you discuss it, and when you discuss it, maybe you'll take note of what I said. It'll be much later on this evening, put it right at the end of this...
Do you wish to carry on?
Yeah, well, I've told you the legal things. I think I've explained that this meeting has a legal structure. And here, according to this agenda here, we have agenda written at the top of the page, and underneath that we have public participation as the first item, followed by the business of the council. And that is a normal, correct, and legal way of having the council propose. But there is something else.
There's something else?
There is something else, yes. Because there is a significant standing order under which it provides a guideline to part of public participation, and it says this: Members of the public are permitted to make representations, answer questions, and give evidence in respect of any item of business included in the agenda before the meeting commences. That's what it says in Brayding's standing orders. But what I have realised is that the phrase 'before the meeting commences', which is the end of that paragraph, has been added in by Brayding Town Council, and it's not in the model standing orders that are provided by the National Association of Local Councillors. I don't know when it was added in. It was before my time as a councillor. Might have been 2010, a long time ago. But the notion that this public participation can be before the meeting commences is just not correct in law, so it's meaningless to have that in the standing order. And I think the standing order should be revised to reflect the correct situation Sometime. Meanwhile, we carry on. I think this meeting is being correctly run, and that's my view, okay?
Thank you very much, Fanny, for that. It will be noted, and we will get back to you.
I'll respond to it when the relevant thing comes up.
Okay, next person, please. Frank, hello.
Yes, hello. Well, that's totally confused me. I now don't know who to believe. But my comment was going to be, as far as I was concerned, the 101-17 public participation proposal would be something that would be acceptable to me as long as there were notes or some record taken of those issues that may be raised to know that they would have been resolved or not. Secondly, I have noted that in the first part of the agenda you have now put in that paragraph questions of the council relating to items on the agenda. Now, that's the first time that that has been put in. Yes, it has. I brought that to the attention of our residents' association, and at that time it was not in there. If that had been in there from the start, when you new councillors took over, I'm sure that that would have been adhered to and maybe questioned a later date. But it wasn't there, and this is the first time that I've seen them. But anyway, my main concern is the last one, and as far as I was concerned, or I am concerned, that I would think that is a good way of proceeding as long as there are some records kept.
Thank you, that will be noted. Okay, I'm now opening the meeting. Welcome to the council. Hello, everybody. I'm now opening the meeting, Brayding Town Council. The main body of the meeting. Item number one, apologies for absence.
Yes, Mayor, I've received apologies from the Deputy Mayor and councillors Bristow and Bonzie.
Okay, the next item, declarations of peculiary or non-peculiary... I'm not very good at saying that, interest.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. Request for dispensation.
None received, Mayor.
And the next item, minutes of the last meeting held in October, November meeting not held. To receive for approval the minutes of a town council meeting held on the 5th of October 2017.
Yes, Mayor, the November meeting wasn't held, so the minutes for the October meeting won't approve at the November meeting, so they are up for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Do we have anything the councillors would like to say, please? Okay, can I have a proposal that they be taken as read? Thank you. Seconda? Thank you. And a vote, please? Next item is finance. To ratify payments made since the 1st of October 2017 as listed on the payment sheet.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two months' worth of items that have been paid for since the 1st of October. And if anybody has any queries, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any queries, please?
No.
Okay. Can I have a proposer, please? Can I have a proposer, please, that the payments made since the 1st of October 2017 are accepted? And a seconda? Thank you. And a vote? To receive a report from a responsible financial officer in respect of the budget for 2018/19.
Thank you, Mayor. The budget was discussed at the last meeting of the F and GP Committee, and all the figures were discussed and agreed by the F and GP Committee, subject to final figures from the Isle of Wight Council which won't be available until the end of January, beginning of February. The F and GP Committee recommended approval of the second draft of the budget figures, and I recommend these to you now. If you all have your budget sheets in front of you, which has been amended to reflect the changes that the F and GP Committee wished to make.
Have we any comments, please, councillors? Next one, to resolve to ratify the proposal proposed draft budget recommended by the Finance and General Purposes Committee, subject to financial... Sorry. Subject to final figures from the Isle of Wight Council. Can we have a proposer, please? I'm not used to this. Thank you. And a seconda, please? And a vote, please? Thank you, thank you. To resolve to ratify the final budget proposal at February 2018 meeting.
I don't know who took the council's figure by then. Yeah.
Seconda?
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Next item, Brayding Station. To receive a report from the Chairman of the Station Committee, councillor Ramsden. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Very brief report this evening. We've been working with Carol at the station throughout this season. We've had a very successful season, a most enjoyable season as well. We ran eight events this summer. We've got nine events programmed for... or planned for next summer. Again, hopefully increasing income. We're looking for in the next several months some grant funding to be able to completely repair us to the signal box. And we are looking forward to another very successful year next year. And I would just like to thank Carol for all the hard work that she's done for the council at the station. There is another item which Linda is going to kindly deliver for me, which is the finances for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ramsden. To receive a financial report from the responsible financial officer for 2017 season recommended by the Station Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. You will have the balance sheets in front of you. Income for the station inclusive of VAT this year amounted to £7,421.50. Expenditure inclusive of VAT amounted to £10,595.24. So we ended up with an expenditure over income of £3,531.40, which is great improvement on previous years. Happy to answer any questions if any councillors need to know any further information?
Do we have any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, the Station Committee have agreed to these figures and have asked that full council resolve to ratify the figures.
Okay, can I have a proposer, please, for that? Thank you. Seconda? Thank you. And a vote? To resolve to ratify the... Oh, we've done that already. Okay, let's turn the page. Next item, Brayding Community Partnership. To receive a report and recommendation from the Finance and General Purposes Committee in respect of assistance for the Brayding Community Partnership.
Thank you, Mayor. At the Finance and General Purposes Committee held on Wednesday the 29th of November, agenda item FGP 4517, members considered a request from the Brayding Community Partnership for assistance with funding as the Isle of Wight Council will no longer provide funds to operate the youth club after the 31st of March 2018. The committee unanimously voted to recommend to full council that an award of £2,000, which was the amount allowed for in this year's budget proposal agreed last February, be granted to the Brayding Community Partnership. Madam Mayor, the proposal was made by councillor Ramsden and seconded by councillor Grayney. And may I request that you ask for a vote from councillors here this evening as to whether Brayding Town Council wishes to endorse the recommendation of the F and GP Committee?
Okay, councillors, can we have a vote, please? Thank you.
Could I have a proposer in the second?
Absolutely.
Oh, the proposer in the second, I'll take that.
Yeah. I'd like to accept that.
Okay. To resolve to agree the recommendation of the Finance and General Purposes Committee if appropriate. And this is about the next year, isn't it?
Yep. Now we've done that now.
We're really rushing along, aren't we? Emergency planning team brought forward from November agenda. Number one, to receive an update from town clerk regarding the status of the emergency planning team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of the emergency planning team is to provide local immediate assistance in the event of an emergency. The team does not replace the proper emergency services such as the police, fire, and ambulance, but merely assists perhaps before these services are able to get to the scene. The Isle of Wight Council does have an emergency management team who coordinates services, and our local emergency team would offer on-the-ground assistance as well as local knowledge, which is essential in these situations. Scottish and Southern Energy have given Brayding Town Council a grant of over £2,800 as part of their commitment to the community in order to pay for essential equipment that would be essential in emergency situations. Before May this year, the team comprised of councillors, members of Bragg, and local residents who felt they had the capability to assist in certain situations. For instance, one resident had a chainsaw and one offered the use of his four-by-four. Before the winter is fully upon us, the town council are looking for volunteers who would consider contributing to this community-led cause, and this includes councillors, as the previous members have now stood down from the council. If there are any residents here this evening who would like to know more about volunteering, could you raise your hand, please, and I will contact you next week?
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask councillors now?
Yeah.
I'd like to. Gerry? And John?
I'm quite happy to volunteer to help. But is there a way we could advertise this to involve somebody who isn't 67 like what I am? We want to involve our young people in this. Luck will have it, things will happen when they're out at work. But we ought to involve other folks as well, and not just the ones that are still on the roof.
Yeah. I think... Oh, let's ask everybody else, but if I just say quickly, we could go to the youth club.
Starters.
And I could talk to my next-door neighbour who runs the Methodist Church youth group. We could all go to the youth club, couldn't we? And that would give us a chance to have a look around the people that haven't been in there.
Thank you for the names, lovely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Town clerk reports and updates. Updates from councillor surgeries.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more complaint received regarding the surface of Doctor's Lane, hedgerow cutting and damage at the junction with Coach Lane. This has now been included on the items...
This has now been including on the, included on the items for consideration at the proposed ward walk in January. I've got updates from October town council meeting. Island Road answered my query regarding the missing flashing speed sign at Merton Road to say that it was being repaired and will be back from the repair as the week commencing 6th of November and installed thereafter. Further emails from me have not been responded to by lunchtime today. The environmental health officer has replied to say that the results for July and August revealed, in his words, ridiculously low readings. And I have since received the laboratory results for September, this is for pollution in the high street, uh, which have been forwarded to the resident who made the inquiry. It appears that Braiding High Street has the lowest readings of the sites monitored on the islands. Nunwell, Nunwell Farm Lane sign is to be replaced by Island Roads. The resident concerned about the defibrillator has been contacted and his queries resolved. The East White Landscape Partnership, as I'm sure you're aware, down to the coast have recently funded surface repairs to footpath B3 that follows the top of the old key wall across Braiding Marshes. The works form part of a wider package of surface improvements on the Yar River Trail between Braiding and Pembroke. These are now substantively complete and they're in the process of organising a small celebratory walk to mark the occasion in December.
Thank you.
The last one is directed by Linda Rhodes. Uh, the last item on my updates is a letter received from Island Roads regarding the closure of Braiding High Street and the, and the disruption experienced by residents and businesses. Uh, we wish to repeat our previously provided apologies to all parties that were affected by our early arrival and by our failure to adequately communicate this programme change in advance. We take our responsibilities very seriously whilst we endeavour to plan and deliver the largest highways investment ever seen on the island, and we regret that there have been some communication failures in your area. I won't read the whole of the letter, it is available in my office if any members of the public or councillors would like to read it in full. I'll read the penultimate paragraph which says, we again provide our sincere apologies and we will continue to provide Braiding Town Council our full support via our engagement activities. We trust that these will afford Island Roads the opportunity to support the town council to achieve a local requirement or initiative by way of compensation. And that sounds promising.
It does sound it. Okay. Next item is committees. Number one, traffic working party councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Mrs Mayor. We have, um, in the last month carried out an informal ward walk. The idea is so we don't drag people in from the Isle of Wight Council or Island Roads or our district councillors. We actually go and address the issues, I'll look at the issues ourselves first. Um, and that has proved positive particularly in Racks Road where the cause of the problem is simply a blocked drain. And you don't actually need six or seven people to actually go and look at that. What I propose, there's a list of the areas we've looked at, is Lower Furlongs, Racks Road, Marshcombe Shoot, which I think came from you Frank, um, Upper Rajston Road and between the vineyard and Bullies Hill, the Mall and Doctors Lane and King's Close. I think, um, if possible, rather than sit and read all this out, can these either be put on the webpage or, and indeed appended to the minutes of the meeting?
I can certainly put that into the minutes of the meeting and.
There we go.
Thank you.
So that's that one. And as, um, previously said, there will be a formal ward walk with said district councillor in January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Isle of Wight councillors, um, Isle of Wight councillors, a report from councillor Tyndall. Good evening councillor Tyndall.
Good evening.
Very nice to see you.
Yes, sorry I missed the last meeting. Otherwise engaged. Anyway, I've got a couple of things and a couple of things, uh, from what Linda was saying, Clark was saying. If you don't get an answer in a reasonable amount of time from Island Roads, give us a shout and I, I will talk to them. As it was, I, I've actually run under today about the manhole covers and the signage for that, because originally I asked them if Key Lane was going to be blocked and they said, no, it wasn't. Then I see the signage which says it was going to go up to your road. So I thought I couldn't get in. And as I was going to get the ferry that morning, I was quite concerned. Um, I also mentioned to them that they said that the signage said it would be from the 4th of, uh, December, to the 4th of December, which is actually the 5th, so it was rather confusing. So, um, they're aware of that, but fortunately on the night, the man was out here, the Island Road man had the common sense to realise he didn't need to be all the way up in Crescent, so he brought it down here so I could get in and out. That's fine. The Nunwell Farm Lane, which Fanny asked me for in a meeting prior to the other one, I think it was, they promised me that would be in a month. If it's still not there, if it's not there by the end of this December, I will kind of word them again, okay? That's the general things. So if I can be of any support to instigate something, you know, something, I'd do that. Now, the other thing that was mentioned here was the Isle of Wight budget and the lack of funds to go to the Braiding Community Partnership. I have tried and done my best of what I can, put as much pressure on as I can, especially as the man who's in charge of that particular part, his name is called Paul Braiding. And I said, I can see the press, you can see the headlines now, Braiding fails Braiding, but don't quote me on that, that's off the record, okay? Um, and I've told him that. Anyway, um, but I'm, I'm still trying, I'm still to see if we can get a squeeze of money and then maybe a possibility, but I'm making no promises. Okay?
Thank you.
Now, there's just one other thing, which has nothing to do with that, which is a little bit about what some of the things are going on here tonight. And it's about democracy and the ability for people to speak and everything else. But democracy is a two-edged sword. My freedoms may not be your freedoms. Somebody else's freedoms to do things might inflict on other people. Why have a divided audience here? Some people who want to, want to, you know, to do something because they say they're free to do it, other people don't want that freedom on. So it has to be thought through. And the only other thing I'm going to say is, democracy is not something that's just come today, it's taken centuries of work. People have died for it and everything else. And one of the things that came to mind was, you know, my father, he was in the Second World War, never talked about the war, never said anything about it. And I always wondered why. When I found out why, because he was on an aircraft carrier, was bringing back prisoners wars, prisoner, prisoner, prisoner of war from the Japanese prison camps. He saw what that condition was like. He was horrified, so much so that in one particular instance, he was a chef at the Observer newspaper, Japanese contingent were coming in and he was told he's going to cook for them and he said, I'll cook for them, but they'll all be dead at the end of it. That's the sort of thing. And I, as an ex-soldier, I understand, I know people, I know who have fought and have died for democracy. So it's important that it's done properly and it is fully respected by everybody. Okay? So that's what I want to say, because I think it's important. It inflicts, there's a freedom, but there's a freedom that should be done with, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, care, because it's, should be cherished.
Well said. Thank you councillor Tyndall. Um, could you please tell Paul Braiding that I'm the mayor because he, I knew him when he was very young, we visited his house in Sandown.
I should dis.
He is very nice.
I should say, I, I, you send your regards.
Thank you.
Would that be the citation?
I don't know. Probably just me. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, public participation brought forward from our November agenda. Number one, consider holding public participation for a period of time not exceeding 30 minutes before the agenda in respect of monthly town council meetings.
Can I?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, before, before councillors debate, um, I have just a few things that I need to say, unless you want me to wait until after you've spoken. Braiding Town Council is governed primarily by the Local Government Act 1972 and must comply with the provisions of this as well as other legislation, including the Localism Act 2011. I'm a fully qualified town clerk and it is my duty to ensure that this council complies with the law. It is also my duty to ensure that meetings are conducted in accordance with the law and Braiding Town Council's standing orders. Monthly meetings are meetings of Braiding Town Council to which the public are invited to attend. They are not public meetings. Arnold Baker on Local Council Administration 77, which is the legislative guidance under which town and parish council operates, states, many local councils set aside a period when the public can ask questions or even make statements. This is an excellent practice as long as the period is defined and is clearly understood that the public must not take part at any other time. As Fanny was mentioning earlier, the National Association of Local Councils also provide legal topic notes in respect of public participation and included in LTN 544, it states, when the public attend meetings, they have no right to participate in them unless permission is given. It is good practice for councils to set aside time, e.g. 15 to 20 minutes at meetings for the public to make statements and ask questions. Standing orders may confirm that public participation at a meeting is restricted to items of business on the agenda for the meeting. Members of the public who wish to communicate about business which is not in the agenda for the meeting may communicate with the council in alternative ways, e.g. by written correspondence or attending councillor surgeries. Braiding Town Council Standing Orders 1F entitle members of the public to speak once only in respect of business itemised on the agenda and shall not speak for more than three minutes. Braiding Town Council sets aside 30 minutes for this purpose. Madam Mayor, this item on the agenda is brought forward from the November meeting, which is, which was abandoned. I have to advise that to allow the public to enter into debate or comment during the main body of the meeting is not within the law. Thank you.
Thank you Linda. Um, can I have your comment please?
Yeah. Um, Linda has kindly covered most of it. It's not a legal requirement to have public participation. Um, it is a gift. And it's a gift, this is badly worded, the legal topic. It says, it says here, um, where a council permits the public to participate at a meeting, this session says, is included as in like them in the agenda? That should say it's actually recommended to include it. The overriding thing is the Bible there, which is Arnold Baker. And it says that many councils set aside a period when the public can ask questions and that's exactly what we're doing. It doesn't say it has to be within the body of a meeting. And as a lawyer, would you concur with that?
I, I agree with the reading of that. There's the extra sentence in the Braiding Town Council Standing Orders, enables people to make statements about non-agenda items, but doesn't require the council to take the action there and then. The, the part, I, I, part about being the agenda, I've seen with everyone I've seen.
Hmm, so have I.
Yeah. As a lawyer, I, I will point out now, I, for 25 years, I sat in magistrate courts. My specialisation in law is criminal law. If you try to settle dispute with a stick, I can tell you pretty much what's going to happen. But, um, this sort of thing is as new to me as to any of you. And some of the wording is deep.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more comments?
Sorry, I have one more. The overriding principle of this is that we have listened to people who actually want to be able to come and talk about things that concern them. This can actually be addressed, but not until May, by changing the standing order. So I think this is a very good, um, holding position if you like, because if we amend the standing orders in May, it will be the June meeting before we become active. So that's effectively nearly another six months of people coming and speaking on things they may wish to speak about.
I have heard and seen written ideas about this on the internet and things, where some people want to speak after the councillors have debated the subject and before they vote. That is clearly not allowed in the law. The law is straightforward, the council debates, the council vote. But personally, I would like to see the forum before the agenda items are dealt with, at least flexible enough so people can raise something. Again, with that caveat, the council is not to be expected to act suddenly on something it's just found out about. But with that caveat, because I don't want to be in ignorance of what is concerning the people of Braiding. I want to know what's concerning the people of Braiding, but I don't want to have to suddenly leap up and try and solve it at that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I hear, have you got a comment please councillor?
I feel that we should.
Doctor?
I feel that we should, um, allow the public to speak on any item 30 minutes before the agenda of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Totally agree, yes. I, I think public participation in the way that we've got it laid out in the proposal is an excellent idea and absolutely support it.
I, um, I, I do agree with wanting to know what the public need, want, expect, feel, have an, uh, an opinion on, um, agree with, don't agree with. It's all very important because they are the people that we represent. I like it the way it is. It is easier to manage because, well, it just is, but the way that we as Braiding Town Council get all these things, how the public feels, um, what they need, et cetera, et cetera, which I've just said, is through town councillor surgeries, the telephone, coming into the Braiding Centre to see the clerk, emailing, putting messages or letters in the letterbox to, for the clerk to receive the next day. There are many, many ways. Um, I don't even mind having notes from my door, which I have had. I had one last week, um, asking if I could go around to visit somebody, um, and with a phone number to ring them first. I've had phone calls at home. Um, of, your first point of call for the public is the clerk, but I don't mind at weekends and never have done. So the ability for the public to, to engage with us is, is there, in my opinion. Okay, I said nothing. Was that a yes? I now need a proposal please to leave, um, standing orders. Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Seconder?
Yeah.
And vote please.
As it is.
Yes, it is.
Well, the proposal that has been made as is.
Sorry. To resolve the whole public question, question prior to.
Just, just on, please get there. And, and that includes that line in our standing orders which allows other subjects to be raised, but clearly says they don't have to be dealt with, yeah, yeah. Outstanding orders.
Outside of the meeting, they're not covered by standing orders.
That's right, so it's before the meeting starts.
Before the meeting, yes.
And we can, we can come in, yeah. I like it.
Thank you everyone, and that is the end of our December meeting and I would like to wish everyone a happy Christmas and happy New Year, including our visitors from the left. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much everyone.